All in favor?
All right.
And I opposed to thing. We have no approval not required. And then I want to ask, are you here for the decision on the Town of Falmouth? Okay. I was going to take it out of order if you were. Next on the agenda is discussion of the Springbars Road Worcester Court land use study. And as you will recall, when we had the joint meeting with the Selectmen and the Cape Cod Commission was here to give a report on the interim study, we at that time said that the Planning Board and the Selectmen would meet with their own respective boards to discuss anything that they hadn't discussed on the report, make any suggestions of things that they would like to see that were not included or any comments. So tonight, we are meeting as the Planning Board, and at a future date, whenever we can get the two boards together and whenever the Selectmen have their meeting, we will come together again and discuss this jointly so that a recommendation for any modifications can be given to the Cape Cod Commission. So, does anybody have concerns, comments that they did not express at that joint meeting? That all was taken down and presumably it's in notes and the Commission would be looking at that already. So, Paul?
Yes, I have a question. Who's the applicant for that project?
That's a very good question. Who's the applicant for the project?
The applicant for this report is the Town of Falmouth. You and the Board of Selectmen are the clients.
But who is applying to the board for that? Is it the CPC? Is it the Town of Falmouth? Who's responsible for submitting this to the town for approval?
The report has been submitted by the-
No, the project itself. The report's from the Cape Cod Commission. I assume that's what you have.
Right, that's what our discussion-
The town requested Cape Cod Commission to do a report, which I thought was very well done.
Okay.
But there was a lot of discussion, apparently, about different variations of what's in that report. My question is, who is really applying for approval of this project? Is it the town? Is it CPC? Is it Cape Cod Commission? Is it somebody else?
Okay, if you're referring to the housing development on Springbars Road-
Yes.
That's a portion of this report. So my advice to you all and to the entire board is to look at the entire report in its whole. Don't focus on 10 acres to 200 acres. The report is for you, you're the client, it's a planning document. There are some current management issues with one specific project, but don't get, just like on the turbine issues, don't get drawn into current management issues. Take a look at the report. Is there anything in there under the future land use scenarios that you wanted to see expanded? Are there some of the zoning proposals, the recommendations, and the linkages to the harbor? Those are the types of global issues that I would recommend the planning board focus on. Ultimately, if there are projects that flow from this report, the town, because it's town on land, would probably be the applicant. And there may be agents in charge of the administration of certain projects. But my advice to the board tonight is to take a look at this report in its total, look at it as a planning document for the entire study area, which goes all the way up to the stop and shop lights and down to the harbor. And let the Cape Cod Commission know what you like about it or don't like about it, or what you would like to see included or expanded upon. And then we'll get into project-specific issues perhaps at a later date. That's my recommendation to the board.
Ralph?
Well, the agenda says Springbars Road Worcester Court land use study. That's what the agenda says. Now, the land use study starts on page 53 of this report, okay? And it's after considerable discussion about the housing project. Now, to answer Paul's question, I don't think anybody's applying to this board for anything right now. However, the history of the, of this project, of this parcel, I should say, was initiated by the Community Preservation Committee, dealt with the funding of it, got approval. The conservation portion of the parcel, received a $500,000 grant from the state to help fund that. And the Community Preservation Committee is currently moving forward on the development of that parcel. But the Community Preservation Committee isn't applying to the Planning Board or to the Zoning Board of Appeals or anything, or anybody that I know of at this time.
Other comments?
I must admit that in the last four days, I have not reread this entire report in its entirety to come up with a holistic approach of comments for it. So I'm not really prepared to discuss as was just explained. But I did have a chance to read it somewhat, and I did notice they had made mention of a green corridor that could perhaps be expanded. I'm assuming that's closer to the wetland and along the eastern border of the property. I don't remember having that discussion last time. There's also mention in there of the fact that they feel like mixed use is a better transition to residential. We didn't discuss that last time. But not really, really, I haven't really done my homework really to discuss this in its entirety.
So perhaps, I've got some comments to make, but perhaps then we should bring it up a second time after this discussion tonight with additional thoughts?
Whatever you're prepared to comment on, do so. And if you want some additional time, that's always the board's purview. But at least, you know, if you think there's more emphasis in the report on, you know, green corridors or the mixed use zoning, that's a comment to submit and a worthwhile.
Jim?
Well, I believe the new maps were issued by FEMA on the 3rd and received by the town on the 10th. And I think they should be forwarded to the Cape Cod Commission. Instead of talking about maps that may be coming out, they could finalize the report to the maps that are actually out.
Okay.
You're referring to May, not June?
May. They were issued on May 3rd and stamped received by the town on May 10th.
Ralph?
Okay, those maps are just preliminary maps. They have not been approved. And they have to be approved by the town, I believe?
Yes. There's one caveat, though, that I may be wrong in this, but my reading of it and understanding that if the town does not approve them, then no one can get federal flood insurance. So that may be a moot point.
Let's take a couple steps back again. The National Flood Insurance Program has issued new flood insurance rate maps. They are developed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And they are sent to the states, and the states send them down to their counties, and they're afforded to the town. The town doesn't have to approve them if they don't want to. If they are afforded also to the federal government, they become property of the town. If the town doesn't want to be part of the National Flood Insurance Program, that's something they could do. If the town doesn't want to vote to adopt them, that's okay too. They will still have to be part of the State Building Code, and they'll be part of the State Sanitary Code. But we'll get into a discussion so the board doesn't digress or do too much. We just went down to the FEMA conference yesterday. We have all the information. I hope to bring it back to the board for its meeting on July 9th over regulatory matter and explain exactly what it is that has to happen with regards to the new flood insurance rate maps. But for tonight's purposes, you know that they're coming in the horizon. There are portions of the study area that are affected. You may want to opine on those affected portions. And then, you know, a lot of the study area is not subject to, you know, these new maps. And I think the board might want to take some time to take a look at that.
One of the comments that really struck a chord with me in the Cape Cod Commission report was on page 12, and I'll quote, "As redevelopment projects occur along this corridor, the town should consider opportunity to restore this wetland system, especially where the wetland system intersects with the floodplain. Not only will wetland restoration improve habitat within this corridor, but it will aid in restoring floodwaters during storm events and help with nutrient management within Little Pond." And I see in the paper now where the CPC is going to look into starting that process of restoring wetlands and giving the public access to the head of Little Pond. That said a lot to me.
Would you like more definition within that, or that's a sufficient recommendation?
No, that was sufficient. There were other places in that report that that same type of information came out.
Okay. One more comment?
Yeah. I understand we should be looking at this Cape Cod Commission report in its entirety and not just focusing on Springbars Road. But it would be really good if we had a map showing the impacts of these floods in the areas that everyone could see. And then the one I'm looking at becomes clear that we really should be focusing on the properties along Worcester Court, the plaza, all the way up to CVS, and looking at the land use for those areas, because that big section is not in the floodplain. And maybe the next time we have this discussion, we could have a big map on the wall so we could keep being brought back to the focus of the report, not just on one portion of it. It might be helpful.
Okay.
I don't recall the date, but it must be at least a month ago, five, six weeks perhaps, when the Cape Cod Commission made this presentation to the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board. At that time, we had not discussed this project from a Planning Board perspective. We were asked for comments on an individual basis. Most all members did make comments, and I don't believe the Board of Selectmen made any significant comments. They made some comments, of course. But what's the status now? Are they going to revise or finalize this report? Are they waiting for a report from the town to do this? Or where are we on the timeline? Because we gave some comments individually, but I don't know if they're waiting for official comments from the town before moving forward to finalize this report. Because we need to have something final to be able to make some decisions, and I don't know where that is.
They would like something officially from the boards, because we're the client. And the way the boards were together was you would retire it as individual boards and come back in joint session. If you want to continue along that line, that's fine. If you want, you simply submit them as this board, that's fine. But they would like to have something official from the-
They want something in writing from this board?
Yes, they would like that.
Would they like something in writing from the Board of Selectmen as well?
Yes.
And what's the timeline for that? Any idea?
I can't speak for the Board of Selectmen. I know it's on their list of things to do. I don't know where it resides.
The reason I'm asking that, there seems to be some sense of urgency of comments made by people from CPC at that meeting, that they wanted to move forward fairly quickly. And I don't see that really happening, given the timeline that I perceive on the approval process of this project. So I'm not sure where we are in that process at all. If it takes several weeks to comment and the Board of Selectmen takes whatever time they take, it's going to be a while before this report is finalized.
Well, as a, if as a board, the board wants to move forward independently, that you certainly can do that and offer to the Commission staff your initial thinking as a collegial body. That's okay. If you want to share a sense of urgency, that's also the board's prerogative. Or if you want to take a little time, Doug is indicating you want a little bit more time. But as a board, you can decide what it is you want to do independently.
Well, the comments that were made by members here, if I could speak in general, were comments as a result of reading the report. There were issues that were raised in the report that were brought up by the Cape Cod Commission. And again, I thought they did a very good job in a number of issues, traffic and the economic analysis and a number of other reasons. And they did raise these, I'm not saying red flags, but they did raise some issues that need to be addressed.
Okay. For comment?
And I think this board can address some of those, and maybe perhaps not all of them. But there were issues that are not a surprise to the Cape Cod Commission, I don't believe.
So you're indicating that because it looks like it might be a while before we can meet jointly with the Board of Selectmen to forward this, that we can forward our comments directly as an interim report?
I understand there's a sense of urgency, and I respect that, and I think it should be moved quickly.
Then if as a board you want to move faster, you can communicate that to the Board's line.
Rich?
How important is it that we be unanimous in an agreement, and more importantly, how important is it that we be agreeable with the Selectmen in our comments and interests and that we-
We're not in the agreement stage of this. We're taking a look at this report and offering comments to the Commission staff as to what you may want to see expanded or amplified or fine tuned or-
But I mean, how important is it that we have the same, express the same interest as the Selectmen?
That's not my call. I don't think, I think you have a different set of interests and land use planning lines than the Board of Selectmen does. So express your concerns as a board, as you perceive them, or your comments as a board as you have them. And don't be overly concerned if they coincide with any other board's thinking. Think as a planning board. You're here as elected officials. You're here at the benefit of the community. If there are concerns expressed by others, note them, take them into your consideration, be thoughtful about them, but then act as a planning board. That's what you're elected to do.
That answers my question.
Doug?
So when I saw the agenda on my email, I guess I somewhat misunderstood the mission. Am I the only one? I mean, if others are more prepared to discuss this and send back feedback, I'm fine with it. I did read the whole thing the first time we got it. Familiar with it?
I have not reread it.
Right.
I'm, I think we did a very comprehensive job of covering it at the first joint meeting. I do have some additional comments that I will make.
So if others are ready to discuss it and send feedback, I'm ready too then.
Jim?
I've read it extensively the first time, a couple times, but I also re-watched our joint meeting just before this. It was on television, and Kevin mentioned that by mid-June, we would be ready to move forward as a joint committee. And that's when I'd just left to come here, but he was just finishing up his comments, that the goal of that night was to be ready by now to move forward. I am prepared to move forward. I don't find anything lacking in the report, other than finalizing the new information.
Okay, I do find things lacking. Okay. Because what I did do is take a look back at the scope of work that the Commission prepared. And there were three main objectives, and the third one, in my estimation, has not been fulfilled. And that is to study the broader area in the vicinity of the property, to identify opportunities to enhance community character and quality of life through connections to existing and future land uses, and through coordinated development or redevelopment of the surrounding area. I thought at the time, and I still consider, that my belief was that it wasn't only Springbars, the development that they were to be looking at, but it was that whole area from the stop and shop corners and down where Webb is building and where the plaza is. That whole area was going to be given an overlook by the Commission and brought into a, not detailed necessarily, but a broad overview plan for where we might be looking towards the future with how that whole area could be developed or redeveloped in the future. So that was one of the three work objectives, and my belief is that that was not fulfilled. And one thing we did not have was a full group of graphics. One of those things that was supposed to be in there was graphics, including a conceptual plan for the study area. Will be developed to support and illustrate the analysis and recommendations. So when one of the three major groups was severely lacking, we obviously don't have the graphic to support that. Another one under future land use study, consideration of compatibility of adjacent land uses, links to existing residential, commercial, and industrial zones, and recommendations for appropriate transitions between areas. That could have something to do with the green space that they were talking about that was not truly defined. But how do you get this linkage that is, that builds a good sense of community there? That is not just chopped, and that's plunked there and that's thrown there. Another one is the conceptual land use plan will provide broad density and land use recommendations for the study area for the town's consideration. So that, the whole thing on the future land use study, I think was, I hate to be so critical, but I think it was severely lacking for us to be able to use. And that was one of the reasons that I really wanted to support this whole effort, is to have fresh eyes looking at that whole area, because we have been talking about this as part of the future of the town and what we'd like to see it look like. So I've said my piece now. Does anybody have any other? Ralph?
Well, I'm going to go back to the beginning of the report. I found seven specific instances where there were blanks and notes to be added. Sewer design, intersection design, sidewalks, crosswalks, traffic volumes, level of service, and crash history. So those are, there are seven items that are blanks in here, okay? Now, going back to what you just talked about, the future land use analysis. When I first read this, I made notes about what I thought they had, what they did recommend that we do. For instance, on page 57, under the trade and service uses along Worcester Court, they said zoning regulations should address this possibility. So I didn't want that to fall through a crack. I, I think that that was something that they, that they recommended. They also said that we should address, on page 59, that we should address circulation patterns and to increase pedestrian comfort. On page 61, they said that, they talked about a guide for redevelopment to address existing concerns in that, in the specific area, which was the redevelopment potential in the area. Then on page 63, they give recommendations. And one of their recommendations was to create a redevelopment authority and a master plan. Okay, so I think that they have, in some respects, addressed what the, what the scope of work talked about in the future land use analysis. They gave one, two, I've got one, two, three, four, five specific recommendations that they're, that they've given us, which I think covers what Paul was talking about, that they did, they did a reasonably good job of following what we were looking for. I had other comments after that, but I must say that, I like, like most of you, I read it thoroughly once, and I reviewed it today. And, you know, once they fill in those blanks that they, that they didn't, that they haven't covered, page 16, 20, 21, 23, 24, 26, and 28, then I think I'd be more comfortable in continuing to discuss this. But I think to move the process forward, such as Paul has alluded to, I think would be a mistake if we couldn't, couldn't give them something to do after tonight's meeting and say, we generally agree to what you've, what they presented to us, and with a few exceptions, such as Pat has pointed out. And I'd like to, I'd like to see us give them the green light.
Jim?
Excuse me, can, oh, sorry. Can I just follow up on it? Green light to do what?
To come up with a final report.
To find, to move forward, okay. I wasn't sure what green light meant.
Okay. Jim?
I think, I only understand what Pat's comments were because we talk about land use and visioning at our local comprehensive plan, and it would be really good, not for them just to tell us that we should have a redevelopment authority that should figure this out, but actually get their advice on the specific corridor. I appreciate your point, Ralph, they did address it. But to actually know what do they think when we look at the corridor there that's not in the wetlands, that is heavily developed with the mall, and what uses could be there? It happens to be on a sewer, public transportation. Do they think we should be looking for denser growth in that area or not? I mean, that's, that's a more specific answer that I would like to see, not just, hey, you should have a redevelopment authority and come up with your own plan. I thought that the scope actually was looking for some feedback on that particular point from them.
That was my point.
I, on hindsight, I now agree with you. You brought it up.
Yeah, I mean, we have this beautiful redevelopment here in downtown, and we've talked as a board multiple times about extending out further, maybe even down to the school administration building. But there was nothing of that nature in there. This has been very successful here. And that's the kind of thing that I was looking for under that third point. That was my understanding of it. But as so frequently happens when somebody says something or writes something, there can be different understandings. I'm just expressing my understanding because there was so much detail given with the potential Springbars affordable housing, that I feel there's a huge lack when that was one-third of the scope of work. Just a huge hole.
The rest of it got lost.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Ralph?
I'd like to ask Brian a question. Brian, in other towns in Massachusetts of similar size to ours, does the Planning Board generally act as the redevelopment authority? Or are there, do towns, do towns of our size actually have another authority established through their charter or whatever that does, that deals with redevelopment alone?
No, redevelopment authority is actually an elected board. You have to change your charter to create one. It's a separate independent body under a separate general statute.
And do towns our size usually have redevelopment authorities? Aren't they, aren't those in big, much bigger cities and towns?
It really, it really depends. Like Bourne has a recreation authority. I believe Plymouth has a redevelopment authority. It really depends on sometimes the age of your community and how well or how much it's built out that you get into redevelopment. And you're heading in that direction here in Falmouth, because you have a lot of redevelopment potential, whether it rises to the level of having an independent authority that can package land, issue bonds, has the power of eminent domain. I'm not, I'm not sure you're there yet as a necessity or a political reality.
You say Bourne has one?
I'm sorry, they have a recreation authority. There's various-
Recreation authority?
They have a hockey ring that's run by a recreational authority. But authorities, authorities are typically other elected boards. Redevelopment authorities have their own general statute. And a town decides that, you know, it's in their light and best interest to have one for various purposes. I'm not sure we're ready for one here, but you're definitely heading in that direction. Because the EDIC is your economic development authority at the moment. You're a 121(c)(1) corporation. They don't have eminent domain or bonding or packaging or any of those things that you see redevelopment authorities typically do.
Thank you.
The point I was going to make is that redevelopment authority has these powers of actually holding title property very often just to run it through, to repackage it, and then turn it out to private ownership. But it also- And it also, the client has issued bonds, has eminent domain. And that's something that a planning board normally doesn't do. So that's why if we were gonna go there, we would, you know, the redevelopment authority would not be us.
We come to the, the question though, as to whether the planning board can say to the commission, oh, go ahead and do the final. And I don't believe we can unilaterally. We can send these questions, the questions that we have to them, the comments that we have to them, unilaterally. But we also agreed at the joint meeting that we would discuss it, the selectmen would discuss it, then we would meet again and send a joint commentary. So that's almost reneging on what we had promised to do.
Well, then, why don't we just go ahead and tell the selectmen we're ready?
We could, indeed. Paul?
Well, you know, it's been a long time since we had that joint meeting. And I think Ralph is right, we have to move forward. We have enough pretty good comments here, and a number of gaps in there, like the figures and things like that. I think we could very clearly send a notice after this meeting, a letter, and say during the first time we've discussed, the preliminary comments are as follows. We'd like to see the follow-up and get it in their laps, they can do something, and request a final draft, so we have more concrete information.
Send it also to the selectmen?
I think we should do that rather than wait for the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Of course, next week there's a vote, so there's no meeting. And, you know, all of a sudden it's getting into late summer. So I think it's important that we try to move this thing forward and address the comments. And we have a lot of good comments here tonight and previously. And I think it would be relatively easy to send a letter out saying, here's our preliminary discussion, these are the things we'd like to see, when can we get the final draft addressing these issues?
Rich?
Yeah, I'm not surprised that you know that I have some strong opinions on certain subjects. And I would see the existence of a redevelopment authority as being independent of the planning board, which certainly would, and the selectmen. And such a, a board and authority might well have different visions, or a different vision for the town of Falmouth than we as the elected planning board on that. And I don't think that we are, we're not Boston, we're not the dead, where things are so, you know, to such a kind of large scale of development, that clearly we'd be on the scope of the planning board to consider this question. So I would be against the creation of a separate idea. I just wanna make that clear.
And that's a comment that can be forwarded as well?
Yeah.
I believe you. Okay. Brian, because of the joint meeting and because of the implicit promise that was made that we would meet with the selectmen and then forward this jointly, what is your opinion as to whether we should just?
How do we do this? You're on your timeline of mid-June, as was indicated in the joint meeting. Why don't I compile your comments? Why don't you forward them to the Board of Selectmen? And say, here are our initial comments for your consideration. If you'd like to forward them along, if you can agree, then we can probably expedite this without the necessity of a joint meeting. That might, I think, be the middle ground and not just taking unilateral action, not a part of your political advisors, but that could lead to unintended consequences.
Yeah, that's my problem.
So, maybe Jim might correct me, because he just watched the whole meeting over again. But I thought we agreed to go back and discuss it as a board and forward comments. Now?
We just, we decided to go back as the two individual boards and discuss it amongst our own boards, and then come together again at a joint meeting to give joint commentary. Because it's, it's like so much else, when you just keep throwing things, they're wasting time. So that's why we decided that we would do it that way. And there are two reasons that I have concern, and that's one of them. But it's also backtracking on what we implied as a, as a promised route to this.
Okay, so then to forward the comments to the commission and selectmen at the same time would be counter to what we agreed?
No, I, here's a, here's a suggestion. Why don't we go through, why don't I go through my list of what I heard here tonight? What I heard here tonight is that you are overall, overall you're satisfied. You genuinely agree with the preliminary findings. You want them to fill in the blanks more, what's missing in those comments. You'd like to have more specificity with regards to some of the things you saw in the future land use. You would like to see more of the graphics. You would like to see them have more information with regards to the broader study area, and a more specific on your zoning change recommendations. These types of preliminary comments, I'll forward them on, because it's in the public domain, and so they can at least get started. And then maybe I can draft a letter, put the chairman's signature in it, or a memo. I can go to them for their preliminary considerations. And for, you know, a joint meeting as, as, you know, reasonable and prudent, given their workload too. Remember now, they're a very busy board. I think they're genuine in their attempts to move forward, as I know this board is too. But they have a myriad of issues. And yes, sometimes what may be more dear in someone else's heart doesn't always rise to that low of urgency with other boards. But I can make sure the commission staff has your preliminary thinking, because it's stated in open session. I can draft a letter for your consideration and then forward it off to the Board of Selectmen. How's that sound?
Jim?
My comment was that I think they should incorporate the, the maps that are available now. You didn't, you stepped over, you just kinda skipped that one.
Let's see. Conceptual land use plan, some zoning changes, guide to redevelopment, final Worcester Court, flood maps up there, page 12, wetland systems, and you want the new flood maps, right?
The new flood maps, because they, in their study, they said, these are coming, could be adjusted, there was a gray area. I, I know they're not approved yet, but I think it's getting closer to black and white than gray.
Okay. I, I have that here somewhere. I just want to highlight the main points and I should draft it up for you and pass along to the chairman. But at least the preliminary comments, if not that are, so there's some sense of satisfaction that you've accomplished what you said you were going to do in moving the process.
So when it says, they like to encourage mixed use in transition area?
Yep.
I guess when we're talking about the Spring Bars parcel, that is the transition area. But then the developers of that, how do you have their plan in place? So?
Yeah, they're looking more, I think, transition area along Worcester Court, between the businesses and the housing and some of the other areas that are ripe for redevelopment. I think that's where the board would like a little more specificity.
More definition of where they're referring to.
What are you referring to, right? What's your thoughts here? And that's what I'll pass on. I think they already know. And they're working on it, but they would like to have something efficient.
I also have an additional concern, because with the change in, in the flood zones, that's gonna have an implication, a huge implication with that and the change in the insurance rates under FEMA. I'm afraid it will hugely affect the viability of the potential development of the affordable housing. So that was not addressed, although others were addressed very strongly as far as the costs go in relationship to whether that's a viable project or not. So I think I'd like to see that addressed too, if they can.
The risk management of the project, or?
No, the, the, there was discussion as to what's off the books and what's on the books.
Okay.
Okay. There was discussion as to whether putting the sewer in is off the books or on the books. There was discussion about bringing all, all sorts of services in and who was going to pay for it. But the costs were pretty carefully defined as to what that would be. There was, I believe, a brief mention of insurance, if I'm recalling correctly.
Oh, I see, yeah.
But this is a huge change in that cost factor, potentially. I don't know, but I think it needs to be added into the analysis.
But it'd be based on full actuarial risk now, there's no more subsidies. So you would like to see them take a look at that.
I think it needs to be put into the viability formula that they were looking at. We can't know the future, but in this case, the future is now.
Yeah.
Jim?
One other thing that the report did mention, that there were ways to find a way to build in the area, and the ways that were mentioned in that report and at that meeting were possibly doing floodplain construction, filling in the area and building up, and then digging out areas to mitigate for the infill, because you gotta have a balance of what areas you fill. Now that the floodplain is up a total foot, they might wanna redo that math as well.
Look, the commission's job is to come in here and give the town options. Here's some options. For your discussion, consideration, vote, agree, disagree, we wanna do, we don't wanna do, we're gonna spend the money, we're not gonna spend the money. Is there enough information in this report, project-specific and study-wide area-specific, that you feel comfortable in making moving forward for future land use decisions and project-specific decisions? Let them come in and say, yeah, you could, you could do your cut, you could balance your cut and fills, elevate it, you could do all sorts of things. And here's what we think it's gonna cost you. And then vet it out as elected boards, town meetings, what do you wanna do? We're not there. Let them finish their report. Let them, let the town discuss it, vote it. They wanna build whatever it is, wherever they want. We just wanna make sure it's fully vetted, all the information is out there, the most current maps are used, it's fine. Risk management is incorporated to the new FEMA standards, and a lot of that information is becoming available in July. A lot of banks will be issuing letters to current policy orders, and there's gonna be a lot of information coming forward in the next two weeks. But I have that, I'll try and incorporate that into the, into the mic.
Okay. Ralph?
Yeah, Doug, just to address your comment earlier about the transition areas, and on page 57, the, the commission said to dealing, dealing with the compatibility and the way they interact with each other, their recommendation was zoning regulations should address this possibility. So how we do that?
More specifics.
Would be, would be something in the future, but I mean, they, they did mention the fact that that's the way they recommend we deal with that.
Could I be looking for something a little bit more specific than, oh, hey, do another zone, or something like that? How they recommend that we might look at it, whether we buy into that or not, it's something else, but just zoning, just isn't quite enough.
Maybe give us an example of another town or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, oh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So to move this forward now, we just, Brian's taking our comments, he's gonna forward them to the selectmen, and then they can add theirs and send them to the commission, and they can decide whether we have another joint meeting or not.
I've understood two pathways. That's one I understood. The other one is just forward it to the commission as preliminary.
Yeah, I, I, here's, everyone understands, what I'm gonna do is I'll, I'll have a discussion with Sarah Cordier and say, in open session, here's some of the boards, this board's thinking. I'm not going to sit here and wait because it's public domain information, and they can start working on it. In the meantime, what I've heard here is that you want to remain faithful to your discussion with another elected board. I think that's wise. So in the meantime, I'll draft your comments up in the form of a letter for the Board of Selectmen. Or actually, I'll forward it off in the form of a memorandum to the town manager. How's that sound? Here are the planning board's initial comments, and you can pass them along to the Board of Selectmen. And then I will sort of draft a letter for the chairman's signature. You can vote them off at your July 9 meeting. At least, the information will be out there, the commission will have it, and the select will have your initial thinking.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, I'd like to see the emphasis also on the fact that I, for one, look at this document as a planning document for the much larger area. We seem to be consumed with the fact that there's a project on Spring Bars Road that is encompassing everything. But this document, done by a group of professionals who are very good, covers a much wider area. I'd like to see that emphasized in the report as well.
Yeah. Yeah, because the emphasis was not there. As a matter of fact, that was point three in the work plan that I don't consider was sufficiently handled.
I think that's important.
Just that when they say transition, maybe they could give us suggestions, like, does that mean our business redevelopment? I see the couple of places where they pointed out that, says, while the creek stretching north of Little Pond serves as a natural barrier for the neighborhood to the east, there's no similar barrier for residents to the south. At present, a few undeveloped lots provide some buffer, but they will not provide permanent protection. So I guess that's, that is what they were talking about. And I don't know if, do we discuss that before we send it back to them? And is business redevelopment what would be considered there? I don't know if that's appropriate.
That's where we're looking, we're looking for a little bit more specificity.
And clarity as what you mean about the?
How do you go from B2 to residential? What is the transition?
Yep. Got it. Okay, does anyone have any further comments on this?
Yeah, I just, I understand Brian's gonna write a letter. Are we going to allow the chairman to finalize that letter and send it off, because there's no meeting next week? And if we have to wait to come back to the, we're waiting two more weeks. Is it something that can be done without waiting for two weeks for the full meeting again?
You need to vote the board, so you act as a collegial body. There are no Uber members, you know?
Because we talked about mid, mid-June. Or mid-June. The next meeting is the end of June, and then it'll be after that. So there's some sense of urgency, I think, is what I've been hearing from other people here and from myself also. Is there some way of, of accelerating that process?
I, I don't, I don't know the way for the board to authorize the chairman to sign a blank check. I don't recommend.
I'd be happy to sign a blank check, but you might not be.
Well, it's a draft letter. It could be a draft letter.
I, let me, let me just draft a memo. It's gonna go out, it'll be a public document, everyone can see it. I'll try to be faithful to everything that's in here, I'll communicate it to the commission staff. Letters from this collegial body should really, especially to another elect.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, we're not stopping. He's gonna go ahead with the comments, even though they're just draft comments from us. At least I'll have something to kick around.
Rich?
We haven't really decided anything tonight, other than a general consensus that the main thrust of this is, is okay, but we have some specific questions. So that's, we can certainly authorize Brian to run, send a memo to the selectmen, that that's where we're at, and invite them to set up a meeting with us. That's about all we can do.
And the commission heard our original comments at the joint meeting, and I'm sure that was well moved.
My point is, take your time. Don't be, take your time. Everything's gonna be okay. The last thing I wanna do is ready fire in. We'll be fine.
Okay.
If I heard you right, Brian, you're gonna draft a meeting, and then we're gonna present to us, we have to vote, and then it gets sent here.
Any, any formal comments for the votes of the board? I'll bring you something back for a vote of the board.
Okay, so we'll do it next meeting.
In the meantime, I'm gonna make sure that those individuals, let the commission staff have, get a phone call, whoever it might be. I will draft a memo to my superior, who's the town manager. Here are the planning board's initial comments. Off it goes. Please share them with the Board of Selectmen. They'll be from me, won't be a vote of the board, they'll be submitted in the memorandum. That way you're, you're getting those comments out, you're doing something to move the process forward, that you're remaining faithful to your discussion with the Board of Selectmen, and you're not being above your abilities here to start writing things that are voted up.
Yeah.
Can you conclude on that note that at our joint meeting, we agreed to target the middle of June to, to remind them of the timeline?
Sure.
Not that there's pressure, but just that that's why we're doing it.
I will put something in there that, there would seem to be a comment with regards to mid-June as a group on rally point.
This is mid-June, plus a day or two.
Okay. Things always do tend to slide when they are of this nature. I don't get as much angst, because that is just the way government works.
Well, we can still try.
We can still try. But unfortunately, we can't go backwards to mid-June. We're right there, right now.
I think you've made a nice... I think you've made a nice initial start.
Yeah.
And we'll go.
Okay, so moving on to the medical marijuana bylaws-dash-hospital district, Bill has, Eric, excuse me, Brian has some comments on that.
First and foremost, it's not a hospital district and it's not a hospital district, so it should be more of a medical district or a allied health profession district that's not associated with the hospital. I want to make that very clear, that is my agenda description and I want to make sure the hospital understands that it's not a hospital district. We did meet with attorneys for Kidcott Healthcare and Town Hospital. We had had some discussions as a board about whether or not we want to put this into existing zones, whether we want to have business or industrial zone, right, by special permit. It was great, non-unity, amongst the board members, there was no consensus, there were those who said put them in drugstores, this is two districts, there were those who said, I don't want them in this community, notwithstanding any vote of the electorate. So one of the things that the staff is thinking about is going to school on what we've done in the past, is to have a specific district compiled, whether it's a medical district or a medical marijuana treatment center district, based on what we did with, for example, with the senior care retirement district. And we crafted, sort of the dispersion model that the state has come in, a thousand feet from a school, 500 feet from a playground or where children congregate, we can use the concentration model. And we craft a specific zoning district for that use, like retirement care centers, without a mapping interest. And that we'll have a district that indicates that it might be allowed as a matter of right or a special permit, together with allied health, a bank, police stations, armories, whatever us other by right uses could be there. And then leave it to the private sector to come in with a proposal that meets with the town's approval. It might be that they have a site selected, that makes a lot of sense. Then the decision actually comes back to town meeting, just like the senior care did with CLSV. Is the other option that the staff is considering at this point, but we wanted to get your thoughts on it before we go too much further because we're really struggling with the existing zoning districts that we have and getting a good fit. Because it's neither fish nor fowl, you can cultivate, you can process, you can distribute, you can retail sales. So it goes everywhere from an agricultural use to a processing manufacturing use and we just don't have a zoning district that has that fit. So my request to the board is, what would you think of an independent, standalone, newly crafted district modeled on senior care retirement?
Modeled after?
Senior care retirement. So we're going from dispersion model to that concentration. Chief's the chairman.
Brian, I have a basic question. Not every town is going to have one of these, but does every town have to have a bylaw that will allow it?
Most towns are having bylaws because unfortunately, the Commonwealth has this, you know, there's going to be, you could have 35 of them.
Yeah.
The thought was, and the planners in Barnstable had the same thoughts, that they were probably, because it's medicinal, a lot of you there, view facilities that have pain clinics or medical facilities. Turning out, probably, not, turning out not to be the case. And a lot of the hospital districts and all the care providers out there are terribly interested in medicinal marijuana. So yeah, you don't have to have a bylaw, but then we're confronted with the fact that I don't have to be an onsite cultivator. I can actually lease land in another town for cultivation purposes. So you have to, you should have something. You may not have a treatment center, you may not have a distribution center. A lot of towns have regained the cause, hey, can I have a home occupation growing marijuana? Can they reside in business districts? What is, so we need to address.
Okay, Rich?
Don't we have to go back to town meeting one way or another?
Yes, one way or the other. We're not going to make November town meeting. I just, we're not going to.
But we have to go back anyway, so this makes as much sense as anything else.
Well, so I'm waiting to hear from the board, what do you think of that idea?
But one question is, would this just be a general district that could apply to anything like, not, let's say marijuana from cultivation to sale, but let's say grano, production, you know, fertilizer, grano, would it be that general a district that...
No, it'd be a very specific district.
It would be very specific to marijuana?
Right.
Okay.
Just like senior care was very specific to senior care, this would be very specific to this particular land use. You said this.
Doug?
So I think that specific zoning for the so-called perhaps super center, we could do everything and it would be likely that if one of those came to town, it would be the only one. So that could be in a specific area design, I think that's a good idea. And then maybe if they were lesser satellite-type things and they wanted to be in another area, they could come to us and ask for a special permit possibly.
Okay. And what district?
I don't know that, but it's business probably. If it was a retail, if it was just a center to pick it up, maybe it would be a business. If it was a center just to grow it, maybe it would be agricultural with no retail capability.
Trying to think about this long-term, let's say for instance, that the consensus of this town was that the majority of the people didn't want one of these medical marijuana treatment centers. So no matter what we propose, when we go to town meeting, they keep voting it down. They keep voting it down. So I take it that the attorney general is not going to chastise town meeting for doing that, even though towns voted to not have any and the attorney general said they couldn't do that, there would still be a way for this town to say, by continually turning down anything we bring to them about this, that they then prevented from being in the town. So I was thinking that maybe, maybe we could entertain a non-binding referendum for fall town meeting, an article brought by this board saying, giving them an option, something that Brian described here tonight, and to get a feeling of how the town feels about it. We have no idea how this town feels about this, none. You can talk to friends and some will say it's fine and some will say absolutely no. So what would be, what could we gain by having a non-binding referendum placed in front of town meeting in the fall to get a feel for how this town feels?
What you could do, like, moderate elect articles that are necessary to take town, to take action, a vote, that means something. What you could do is under those committee reports, Article 2, is give a report at town meeting, here's where we are with medicinal marijuana centers. We're thinking this, we're thinking that, we're thinking dispersion, we're thinking concentration models. Help us out, get some, get some, a little bit of the discussion going under reports. Might be an option for the board to consider.
You mean, you mean by that, how do you solicit opinions from the, from the public? I mean, they won't have, they won't have any time to think about it, first of all, when they, at town meeting, you're just going to stand up there, give a report and say, what do you think? Whereas if you have it as an article, a non-binding referendum, they have time to think about it before town meeting and then you might get some more valid feedback that might give us a much better feeling about how the town feels.
Let me talk to Dave Vier, see what he recommends.
Well, this is my suggestion, Brian, I'm not, I'm just saying, maybe, I'd like to, before you do that, I think, I think, Pat, you might want to solicit other comments from the board.
Well, I think we can also look up the vote in Falmouth.
Yeah, you could do what?
Look up the vote in Falmouth. Yeah, because that's the public record. How does the town vote? That doesn't guarantee how town meeting will vote, but it tells you what the sentiment is of the town.
It's two to one.
So there's the sentiment of the town. It will not tell you how town meeting will vote on anything specific.
Right, and town meeting is the one that votes on zoning, not the general vote.
Well, again, if you don't have something, someone might come in and say, well, this is a, it's a old distribution center, it's allowed in industrial zone, boom, and it goes. So you need, you need something.
Jim?
I think it's a good idea to establish an MMTC, that's Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, if I got it right, just like we did with the senior healthcare, and study all the impacts important, so we know what's important to it, and create that so we know what the entity is. I like the centralized vote, but then, before, we can create the district, but before we assign it, there's another whole process that goes to town meeting and picking where they go. And they may never put it where they go, but at least, we could at least identify them from a planning perspective, what we feel is important to be addressed for that area. Instead of leaving it vague, we could kind of put down what's important and say, this is where, what should be the rules for that area, but we've got to come back to you and you folks have to approve where it go. We would have to pick a spot eventually and recommend if we found one, but it's going to be a two-phase, two-step process. We just don't establish it and go anywhere. Before, at least that's my understanding how it works, we create the district and then...
You did it, you did it for light industrial scene.
Right, that's what I was thinking of.
It was another example, you created a district and then let the folks come in and decide if it was a good idea for them. You did it for senior care and this would be like third iteration. So there's some precedent.
However, when we create a district, we also say what will be allowed and what won't be allowed and there are different facets of medical marijuana. Do we have to allow everything or can we say, well, we will allow the growing, but we will not allow whatever? Or we will allow the dispensing, but we won't allow the growing?
And I think you have to allow the spectrum of things.
That's the question I have.
Right, that's what you have to do.
But does that have to be all in one question?
So it might be someone wants to have a treatment center, okay, well, you need a zone change. I want a distribution center, well, you need a zone change. I want to have a retail sales of it, well, you need a zone change. The town meeting can decide.
Doug?
Is it your vision that this zoning district for MMD or whatever we choose will apply to even the satellite locations then?
Right.
So that would be the zoning rather than it happens to be in B?
Right.
It's okay?
Correct.
So we would change that specific site even if it's a satellite?
Correct. So if I want to just grow it, and again, there are standards for the medicinal level, this is not just some planted plants in a greenhouse. You have to, there's levels of purity, whatnot that go into the DPH regulations for the cultivation of the products. So let's say, just for sake of argument, there was someone who had a piece of property in an ag zone, they wanted to cultivate. They would come to town meeting and say, I want to cultivate for medicinal marijuana purposes, would you please zone me? I don't have a name for this new district yet, but we just call it the medicinal district.
What?
What am I picking? I would like that zoning designation so I can do X, Y, and Z.
Doug?
Well, so if we craft one zoning district with all its far-reaching regulations, which we discussed last time, we had a lot of ideas like maybe 500 or 1,000 feet from schools and we had many criteria that we had interjected, then if all of those criteria have to be met in each different neighborhood, seems like citing will become very difficult.
You can craft it in any number of ways. You don't, you could keep those, the state requires at least the 500 foot, right? That's a given, it's always going to be. You can go further with that, or you may not have anything. You could just decide that, well, we just take a look at the geography and the population of this vicinity and see what's around and it's looking good, okay. It makes sense here. There might be a place on near Edutain Drive, which is industrial center, and they want to have a portion of it zoned for medical facilities. Might make some sense, there's no schools, there's no playgrounds, there's no areas where children congregate, although we're thinking bus stops, bus stops are a criteria. It might make some sense, but that's just an example, depending on what you want to do. But what we're telling you is that we're not really finding a good fit in any zone. Because we said business too, well, that's all the way from the Nickelodeon to, you know, Shore Street. Shore Street on Main Street, so it's, it's just, you know, not making the fit.
The Nickelodeon would be a good location. We've got to get one going.
And it might be that, you know, the investors in that area or the property owner might just say, that's a really good idea. And there's an opportunity for a zone change, that might make some sense. That's a direction we're kind of heading in, we've been going around in circles a little bit trying to figure out what to do. So I said, well, you know, when all, push comes to shove, you ask the board, what do you think? Your idea?
I think that's the way to go, because we could sit here week after week trying to come up with the criteria to fit in certain zones and I think if we have the district and that can be applied to different constituents that come in looking for, putting in that type of facility, I think we have a lot more leverage and it would be easier to apply, I think. So I like that approach.
Does everybody on board with that approach? I don't hear anybody screaming no, so it looks like...
Well, let me, let me try to work on that a bit. It's not a household district, it's a specific district of some sort. And try to get back to you, there's just no way we could have done four meetings. So we'll see, we might ask town meeting to, remember, you can have two here. And so we might in April, perhaps, for another six months, and we'll try to get something going.
Rich?
Yeah, do we have, oh, use such as drug costs and, you know, AA, these sets, locations?
There's places of assembly. We don't care what you're doing in your place of assembly.
Well, because, I mean, if you have, the drug costs, we don't sell the drugs, but we have users. That could be an office, comes into an office or clinic, there is...
So let's move on.
All right, so we'll move on from that and we'll start crafting something up here for your consideration in the next two weeks.
Okay. A repetitive petition tutorial, Brian.
Okay, now, next, and where do I put mine? In your packages, you... Lost my wheel there. I give you some information in your end of packages on repetitive petitions. You're going to be seeing one on July 9th. The first one is a end-use manager from September of 1990 and the other is information from Professor Babowski. The last time we did this was 1999. Typically, these, this indicates how rare it typically is. And typically, it's a process where someone has been actually voted a special permit denial. The state law, chapter 48... The state law, chapter 48, says if you've been denied a special permit, you know, you can't come back as a repeat application until you wait two years. Now, there's a process that you can come back to the special permit granting authority. You're going to be seeing this on July 9th. It's a two-step process. The first step in the process is that the petitioner, the applicant, has to come before the planning board, acting as the planning board, and ask for its consent to return to the special permit granting authority. Now, the special permit granting authority can either be the board's selectmen, the planning board, or the Board of Appeals. And typically, it's the Board of Appeals. If you, as the planning board, grant consent, and that consent is just based on your complete discretion, six out of seven members must vote to grant consent to go back to the SPGA. Some of the considerations you may want to have for your consent is, in this area where the special permit was denied, are there special studies going on? Are you looking at zoning changes? Are there major construction roadway projects going to happen? Is there a reason why it's a good idea to vote? You can wait to get better with the ballot box. Let's just say, for the sake of argument, you, as the planning board, vote your consent. Now, the applicant can go back to the special permit granting authority. And the special permit granting authority has to make finding that there are specific and material changes in the reasons for the previous unfavorable decision. Let's just say, the special permit granting authority wasn't happy with a parking layout. The applicant has demonstrated that there's a specific and material change worthy of further consideration. There might be several reasons why there was a denial. There might be several minor changes, and it's alone, doesn't rise to that level. But taken together, they do. Now, I just want to bring all this on you on the 9th, because the application has been refiled, and you will be confronted with this decision-making. So, I just wanted to let you do a little heads up tonight what that process is, give you this information to read up on. If you have any questions, call me. Don't call each other. Call me. And we can go into exactly what the repetitive process, the petition process is. They get consent, and then if the special permit granting authority finds specific and material changes in the reasons for the unfavorable action, then we'll rehear it. And we'll come back and restart over again. That's how the repetitive petition process works. It's supposed to be very difficult. Some jurisdictions, or some states don't have, or some legislation doesn't have repetitive petition stipulation. They can just photocopy the application and throw it at you any number of times, essentially wear you down. And you'll see that's what Don Schmidt talks about. But read up on it, get familiar with it. It's going to be a rather complicated process, but in reality, it's pretty simple. Consent, you get past consent, then specific and material changes, you get past that, okay. You get back into the ballot box and we'll hear you again. And that's what a repetitive petition is. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah. Well, we were, you know, the assembly here, I read this Pacman case, no, the Rennie case.
Rennie, the person from Nantucket.
This Rennie case from Nantucket. The changes that the court upheld as being sufficient were, not, I mean, you wouldn't think these are huge material changes. One was revision of outdoor lighting plans, so that the lights were flush at the sea line, installation of blackout graves in the windows, installation of sound-instructed materials, and some landscaping changes. That was, but that was based upon the court's finding that those were specifically mentioned by, in this case, the planning board, and it's denial of the revision permit. So, since those were specifically mentioned in the denial, then the court said, well, then they were sufficiently material as far as changes for...
Right. Remember, the changes, if they were wholesale, changes, it's almost, it's a different application and doesn't, this bar, to your bar, doesn't run. You, I have a whole different application, it's not a repetitive petition.
Right.
But by coming in with some slight changes that address your issues, okay, we could look at you. The take-home message I'm going to give you is, the planning board has complete and utter discretion. Six out of seven of you must say, okay, you can go back and see the special permit granting authority. And it's totally up to you. Just read the cases, be comfortable in your decision-making. Some people say, sure, I always let everybody get back in the ballot box. Well, the consent part is, just let you get back and then the SPGA. SPGA then has to make findings. That's the process.
Okay.
Do you want to explain it a bit, but yeah?
Does anybody else, Ralph?
Well, I think that's, that's a very straightforward explanation, Brian, and it's not all that complicated. You've got, granted, there are examples here of other, of other cases. But you're saying that we could, we could, we could vote the six out of seven, the same night that the applicant comes back in here on the agenda with a revised plan?
Well, what will happen, there'll be two hearings. There'll be a hearing notice for the planning board's consent. If you look in the papers, it will appear soon. That'll be the first hearing you have.
You have to have a hearing for that?
Here. This is a hearing.
I didn't hear that.
Parties in, read through, read through Professor Bobowski's pages. The statute is unclear, but Professor Bobowski, Professor Bobowski, the law professor doing a school, he recommends to cities and towns to have a full, he calls them a section 11, public hearing, because the statute does say that parties in interest must be notified at a place and time where consent will be considered.
Yeah, I see that. Okay. The notice, notice to parties is the same thing as a hearing.
So, you're going to have a hearing on consent. That'd be the first step. Depending on that vote, you're going to have a second hearing.
Yep.
The second hearing will be specific and material changes.
Okay.
Depending on the first one, and there's no, the statute is unclear as to which comes first, we're recommending that consent comes first, as Professor Bobowski does.
Could they be on the same night?
Yeah, on the same night. And that way, the applicant now is, okay, put it all together, combine it, or it's a special permit.
Any other?
But that's two hearings.
Jim?
I just have a question when I'm reading this.
Procedurally, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Procedurally, it's a hearing where consent be considered. We're not sure it's a public hearing, where comments, because it's exclusively the board's decision. And I'm getting guidance from Attorney Duffy on that. My sense is it's just a discussion amongst the board. The specific and material changes, we think is a hearing, but we think it's exclusively a discussion of the board's. And I have a final determination to review there on the meeting of the night. It's not, it's not a public, it's a, I think you shouldn't give consent, or I think it's not specific and material. It's exclusively the domain of the planning board, and exclusively the domain of the special permit granting authority. But the public is notified when you're going to give this discussion.
So, I think when I'm reading this, I should substitute where it says zoning Board of Appeals to Special Permit Granting Authority.
Yes.
Okay. I'm all set.
Right. Because back in 1990, you know, it was war.
I've just a comment, attendance that night is going to be crucial. So, we're going to have to make sure that we're all going to be there. Otherwise, I think the applicant is going to say, please, please delay your vote, or something like that. So, we've got to make sure we're all going to be there.
So, the 9th, I think we took a form count. I think Joyce sent you out an email, so I think we're okay for the 9th. If something comes up, you know, family emergencies, business, something comes up and you can't be here, you know, and you can't be here, then we'll continue the, a motion to continue to the following Tuesday.
Yeah, okay.
But it'd be good to have you on.
Jim?
How does Paul having recused himself from this affect us?
Chairman, I had a meeting this week with town council. Mr. Duffy reviewed the reasons why I recused myself. It is spurious. He's going to give me a letter indicating that his opinion is, and I expect to have that in the next couple of days.
Okay.
And I informed Brian of that earlier this week.
See, the only way we could get...
Sorry?
You just exercise an excess of caution when you recuse yourself.
That's true.
Okay. So, we will be a full board of seven?
We think you can, you can sit as the planning board member in consideration of consent, no matter what. The question comes up whether or not you can sit as the SPGA to make specific and material findings. For sure, if it's a brand-new hearing, you're good to go.
Yeah.
Okay. So, shall we move on?
Okay. No further questions? So, we'll nail down all the procedural necessities for you by July 9th. Let's go.
We have a decision?
Any questions, please, please call us. Okay?
Decision, the applicant is a town of Falmouth, site plan review modification to construct a basketball court and paved parking lot on 14.25 acres at 888 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth. And we have a motion here, who will...
Chairman, may I make a motion?
You certainly may.
Thank you. Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of the town of Falmouth under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw, by a standard type of quote. Post parking and basketball court layout plan 888 Sandwich Road Field, non-encased closed code, prepared by the Town of Falmouth Engineering Division, dated May 28, 2013, revised June 6, 2013, scale one inch equals 20 feet, with the following findings and conditions. Findings, this application seeks to further modify the decision of the planning board dated February 28, 2007, for the construction of the Sandwich Road athletic field. This application proposes to pave the existing parking area, provide sidewalks, accessible parking and viewing areas for basketball court, associated drainage, fencing, and traffic control signs. The planning board finds the plans conform to the standards of the zoning bylaw governing the layout of parking areas. Parking is properly dimensioned for aisle widths, turning radius, stall lengths, and angles. A drop-off area for equipment and referees has been provided. Drainage has been designed and will be installed as per the plan that has been prepared by the town engineer. The plan does not show any lighting, therefore none is approved. However, the parking lot may have security lighting under the supervision of the town engineer. The plan calls for leaving a 70-foot drive natural buffer of trees and vegetation from Sandwich Road to the parking field as per previously approved plan. The board finds this acceptable in view of a former landscape plan for the parking lot. Conditions, lighting may be provided for security purposes. The northerly curb cut shall remain emergency access only and should be utilized as per the planning board's February 28, 2007 decision with the gate to remain in place. The plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. All other conditions of the board's February 28, 2007 decision remain in full force and effect.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, please.
You sure you want to keep that gate closed, huh? That, that was clear. Okay.
That's what came out because of the amount of discussion we had about it and the feeling that they didn't want to change it at this point in time.
Yes. Because they would also interrupt the flow of traffic coming through if you had people coming in here, so.
Okay.
I noticed that they didn't add any extra length to 19, 18, 19, or 20, so I guess there must have been a reason why.
For buses.
For buses, yeah. No.
Didn't fit.
Didn't fit.
Okay.
They did provide, as we requested, the coaching and the umpires spaces?
Didn't fit.
We're going to call them the Richard Latimer.
Doesn't make sense.
Any other comments or questions, please? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Unanimous.
That's because I used to be, that's not a...
All right.
I remember, I met you up there at the Ocean's Parade tournament in South... My girl, my under trolls, girls.
You will notice that there is a change in how, in the next item on the agenda. We had it as new business always, and my brain is not agile enough to translate that into future items of the agenda on future meetings. And so, I briefly discussed that with Brian, said, gee, wouldn't it be nice if we just had it as future agenda items, so there's no confusion with anybody who might be here? So, that is why you've seen that change on our agenda. So, at this point in time, is there anything that people would like to bring up for future agenda items?
I think we should discuss ways of resolving wind turbine issue now that the core recommendation to this local, now that the, you know, the vote went against simply tearing it down, I think we should address that as a zoning question. Or it's planning, not a design, but it's a planning, for sure.
I don't know that we can. How does the rest of the board feel about that?
We have a bylaw, a bylaw, so...
Yeah. We do. And they wouldn't fit under our new bylaw. As the selectmen who have taken the initiative on trying to resolve the issue, the resolution is not a planning board issue, as far as I can see.
Okay. I just, you asked for opinions of what we could bring up.
And we took care of the future.
Yeah, we did, which is what we needed to do.
Okay. No, it's not, I just thought we should maybe address...
Doug?
I don't know if it's our business to discuss it, but we did talk about the possible planning for retreating from the coastline and whether or not it is a viable plan. And I know that's a discussion that we're going to have at some point, but I wonder if it should be a discussion that should happen sooner, because currently we have a situation where the bike path is eroding. There's some discussion, I could be wrong, it might have been fixed by now, but if there is still a situation where that bike path is dangerously eroded, and if we have a situation where there's potentially conservation issues that are preventing that from being rebuilt, I don't know if there's a role for us to discuss planning of that area and use in that area, but there's something that's lacking there. There's a somewhat of a problem between town groups, and I don't know if there's a role for us there, but it should be some sort of planning around those areas so that these issues don't continuously get bogged down, and we have public safety issues.
I would say, yes, there is a role for us that is being discussed in, under land use with the Comprehensive Planning Committee. And the conference that I attended, and Marlene and Brian attended, Doug Hofer was also there, obviously beaches. It did bring up a lot about the rise in sea level. There was a whole segment on rise in sea level. And, you know, and there was also an article in yesterday's Cape Cod Times about what other communities and other countries are doing. And we've got two options, and this is what you can think about. We retreat, or we build armament.
Fight.
Yeah. Okay. And there are various ways of fighting it. Town meeting, if you were listening there, the, on the bike path, because of the constant erosion there, they're going to put a, I think it's a plastic sort of armament to hold that up. And we've got more than just the bike path eroding, we've got the sewer pipe under it that has had at least five failures. So, that's, it's very much on the DPW's mind, and yes, I think we are going to have a discussion here with the planning board.
The reasons?
The bike path.
Truck, okay.
Truck River.
I was thinking that, but I was...
Yeah, yeah.
Just west of Truck River.
Yeah. And Jim, you wanted to say something, I believe.
Yeah. We, Doug, also in the local comprehensive plan, this is discussed all the time, and we're preparing some goals and policies that we bring to this board for a complete...
for a complete review and discussion and get your involvement in it. But we are trying to do it in, in phases first, and it is being discussed and reviewed. And our goal is to have these elements of the local comprehensive plan ready to be brought to this board for full vetting, everyone's discussion, and then to town meeting. It's a, it's a three-step process, but it is going on right now.
Okay.
I might wanna point out that what we're talking about there is, in 20 years, once we get a handle on, you know, carbon emissions, that might be trunk bag.
Yeah.
We need a policy for now.
You know, but.
When do you think we're gonna have this ready, our committee is gonna be able to bring this forward?
We're meeting tomorrow, and I think that's gonna be part of our discussion. There's a, a lot going on here with the revision of the flood areas. So that will come up at a future meeting.
And one of the things on the future of agenda items, Jen, would be the, well, the briefing for the entire board of the conference that was held in IS, where many of these issues came forward. Honestly, we'd like the Brian to have that as a future agenda item, that your issue. Doug, at least give you the thinking of the state DDP, shoreline retreat. The Commissioner of Department of Environmental Protection, there was a stunning comment out there. FEMA flood insurance rate maps are based on what was flood. The DPD is now looking at a policy to, to look at what may be flood, given sea level rise, you know, wave over time. It's under consideration at the state level now. So we'll give you an update on that. That's why I said in the July, there'll be a lot more new information regards to both federal policies of insurance and state policies with regards to shoreline retreat. These are global issues.
It's coming up?
It's coming up, as you can hear from this little review right now as to what you might expect, but you also might be wanting to think yourselves about what your druthers would be. Give up and retreat, or build armaments, because there are all different kinds of things that can be possible. Ralph?
So, are, is any, is there gonna be any more elements coming to fall town meeting?
No. First of all, we decided on bringing those at, to spring town meeting. Normally, we will bring our zoning bylaws to fall town meeting and other things to spring town meeting. So, okay, anything else anybody would like to see on future agendas? Okay.
So that, the report for that conference, is that gonna be on the next agenda?
That, I think the next meeting is pretty full without a report on the conference or what, you know, the...
You've got some special permits, some repetitive petitions, you have a site plan. We might be able to hand out some information.
Okay.
And have a brief discussion, more fully vetted out, I think, around.
Okay, and that would help you too, to think and make comments, I think, if something were handed out.
Yeah, well, I was, I was at Friday's conference.
Oh, good, okay. And I wasn't, I couldn't.
Yeah. And my wife took care of one of the other conferences.
Okay.
The other sessions, so.
All right.
Couldn't be in three places at once.
Hard to. Okay, correspondence, there is none. So. Adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Should I?
All in favor?
Aye.